Roll call, please. Trustee Crane?
Here.
Trustee Weigand?
Here.
Trustee Soylu?
Here.
Trustee Barto?
Here.
Trustee Murphy?
Here.
Trustee Pearson?
Here.
Trustee Anderson?
Here.
Dr. Smith?
Here.
Great, thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda? So moved. Second. Okay, moved by Trustee Weigand and seconded by Trustee Barto, was it? Or Soylu? Okay. Roll call vote, please. Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Weigand?
Yes.
Trustee Soylu?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Okay, the vote is unanimous. And seeing that there are no community input on closed session items, we will now go into closed session at 4:01. And the items are student discipline, conference with labor negotiator, public employee discipline dismissal, release, employment, and public employee discipline dismissal, release, employment. We will return to open session at 6:00 P.M. Call to order. 6:02. In closed session, the board took action to release in non-reelect 184 temporary certificated employees pursuant to Ed. Code Section 44954 effective at the end of the 2023-2024 school year and directed the superintendent or designee to send out appropriate legal notices. The roll call vote was as follows, seven yays. Also, in closed session, the board took action to issue a notice pursuant to Education Code Section 44951 that certificated administrative employee identified by number 780001834 shall be released effective at the end of the 2023-2024 school year from the administrative position of Assistant Principal Back Bay High School and reassigned to a certificated assignment within the scope of his/her credentials beginning in the 2024-2025 school year and directed the superintendent or designee to send out appropriate legal notices. The roll call vote was unanimous. Thank you. We will now move on to opening ceremonies, which is the moment of reflection and pledge of allegiance led by Newport Harbor High School's Brianna Garcia.
Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We move on to adopting the minutes. Do I have a motion to adopt? So moved. And a second? Do I have a second? All right. Trustee Weigand moved and Trustee Barto seconded. Roll call, please. Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Weigand?
Yes.
Trustee Soylu?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Seven zero. And now we move on to recognition. And we have one public comment. It is Lillian Holar, Assemblywoman, Culture and Leadership Office, that will be making a comment. Please come on up. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. I'll just be brief. We're just honored to be here to celebrate our incredible teachers and Classified Employees of the Year. Our office just wants to thank you all for your true service and dedication to uplifting and empowering our students and community. So, thank you and congratulations to everyone.
Thank you. Well, tonight, we have a lot of amazing recognitions. And so we will begin with Assistant Superintendent Olson and Kristen Clark.
Thank you very much. I'll call upon Administrative Director Clark to come up to present Classified Employees of the Year.
Good evening, President Crane, members of the Board of Education, and Dr. Smith. Tonight, we are recognizing three employees as part of the California School Classified Employee of the Year program. The overall purpose of the program is to identify and honor exemplary classified employees. Newport Mesa's classified employees are vital members of our school community and play key roles in creating a positive school environment that helps promote student achievement and well-being. This evening, I'm pleased to assist the board, along with Personnel Commissioner Susan Meyer, Tristan Ailey, and Charlene Matoya in honoring our 2024 Newport Mesa Classified Employees of the Year. So I'm going to start with the first one, with a positive attitude and a warm smile that brightens the day of both students and staff. This beloved Classified Employee of the Year, in the Food and Nutrition Services category, has seamlessly integrated herself into the Kelly Brook School community. Demonstrating a remarkable attention to detail, she assures that the food served is both appealing to the eye and the taste buds for students whom she welcomes each day with kind, encouraging, and uplifting words of support. Her calm demeanor and perceptive abilities are greatly appreciated by staff and administrators who have come to treasure her warm bond and positive influences on students. Her commitment and love for her work is unmistakable in her exemplary attendance record. She has hardly missed a day in 39 years with this school district. She's dedicated to Kelly Brook students. She doesn't just serve food. She deeply cares for and warmly supports students in any way she can and always from the heart. So we're going to congratulate her, but she wasn't able to be here tonight. So it's Nutrition Services Assistant to Ellen Sugiyama. And we are going to make sure that we bring the certificate to Principal Taylor and sometime early next week. From colleagues to supervisors, the Classified Employee of the Year in the Clerical and Administrative Service category is universally commended for her expertise, dedication, professionalism, institutional knowledge, accuracy, efficiency, and high standards. But equally impressive have been the leadership displayed in her respectful, helpful, and friendly demeanor in the workplace that has set the standard for a positive work environment. Not only can she complete work at the highest level, but she does so in a manner that models supportive and empathetic behavior that helps create a nurturing office culture. She has built strong relations with coworkers, with welcoming attitude, her cooperative nature, commitment to achieving common goals, strong communication skills, and involvement in training new staff. We recognize and celebrate the work ethic, taking initiative, the reliability and dependability, consistency, and diligence. But we also take time to recognize the other, just as important, attributes of accomplished employment. The selflessness, the genuine care and kindness for others, the generous spirit and empathy that fosters a sense of unity in the workplace. Congratulations payroll technician Elena Concepcion.
Are they going to take pictures? I don't know what they do this time. Aren't we not doing that anymore?
Thank you.
Exceptional in numerous ways, the Classified Employee of the Year in the Skilled Trades Services category stands out in one extraordinary way. He's a big-picture thinker. This ability allows for analyzing the root of persistent problems, collaborating with site administrators to find the most effective and beneficial solution, sharing credit with contributing trades employees, and training job site employees on newly installed systems in their operation. This employee specializes in low-voltage systems that enclose alarms, clocks, and surveillance cameras. He ably demonstrates professionalism, competence, problem-solving abilities, reliability, and a thoroughness that has earned him great respect, not only from staff, but also Newport Beach and the city of Costa Mesa firefighters who recognize his expertise and ask for him by name when coordinating their response with the district. As he modernizes aging systems, he's ever mindful of student and staff safety as well as expansive and evolving building codes. He makes himself available around the clock for fire alarms and coordinates with building administrators to make sure proper procedure is constantly followed through comprehensive training. He was also selected to represent Orange County as one of nine Classified Employees of the Year. Congratulations electronics technician Hank Nguyen. I just want to thank the Board of Education, Dr. Smith, and the Personnel Commission for your commitment to this important program and the opportunity to congratulate and recognize our Newport Mesa Classified Employees of the Year. Thank you.
Next, we move on to Rhonda Reed for recognition of 2023-2024 Teacher of the Year recipients.
Thank you. It's a delight to celebrate and present to you the District Teacher of the Year finalists to the school board. These top three finalists will go on to the County Teacher of the Year competition. All of these top three also are their site teacher of the year. They submitted an application, was scored by trained readers, and the top six went on to observations and an interview. So as I call them up, I want to share a little bit about the classroom observation from the committee. So Lindsay Messner from Newport Heights, kindergarten teacher. So the committee fell in love with her kindergarteners. The level that they were forming words, sounding out words, forming sentences, and really reading was so amazing at such a young age. They also were just so engaged in the energy and just the willingness to come up to all of us and let us know that they have seen us before. Like I shared at the awards night, one of the little girls said, "I've seen your face driving before." And she also said, "I was a good driver." Just a note. Anyway, Lindsay Messner, would you come up, please? So Christine Cross from Enson. Almost immediately, it was evident how comfortable and safe students felt in her classroom. There was a warmth and ease to her teaching style, allowing students to take risks, and almost every hand in the classroom was up, contributing to the classroom conversation. So Christine Cross, would you please come up? Scott Tarnow from Newport Harbor High. Classroom felt like an orchestrated symphony. There was lots going on, but there was a rhythm that was masterful. Students could sit on the floor and work. They could work in groups, one-on-one, with an adult. It was just amazing to see so much go on, but just have a rhythm that was just calm and engaging. One thing for sure, all the students genuinely seemed to enjoy being there and learning, even though they were doing geometry. So it was clear that the encouragement, confidence, and the hope that Scott pours into his students created this magical learning experience for students. Scott Tarnow, would you come up? Congratulations.
Thank you. Now, we move on to recognition of National Board Certified Teachers. Assistant Superintendent Olson?
Thank you. Somebody might not be able to see the rest of the board meeting if they... Well, good evening. What an honor it is to be here tonight to introduce our teachers who most recently received their National Board Certification. And the National Board Certification is extremely special in the fact that it is difficult to achieve. This is something that teachers do well above and beyond maintaining their teaching credential. And in fact, within the state of California, only 3% of teachers in California have the National Board Certification. Within our district, only 1.6%. So we have 19 teachers who have achieved this certification. So to give you a little bit of a background, the mission of the National Board is to advance the quality of learning and teaching. And the foundation that it is built on is national standards and six propositions. The propositions are: teachers are committed to students and their learning; they know their subjects, they teach and how to teach those subjects to students; they're responsible for managing and monitoring student learning, to think systematically about their practice and learn from experience; and they are members of learning communities. And in order to show their competency, they must demonstrate the contact knowledge. But then they also have to complete a portfolio that's very extensive. It needs to indicate differentiation in instruction, teaching practice in the learning environment which they create. And I think you heard from the propositions that it's built on is they truly need to be a reflective learner. And so tonight, not just one, but we are welcoming two of our teachers who have achieved this. So tonight's great pleasure for me to introduce to you Kristen Rasmussen, who has earned her National Board Certification in Science and Adolescence and Young Adulthood. So Kristen, do you want to come on up? So while Kristen is here so that she can have a moment in the sun, Kristen's been with the district for 19 years. She started as a substitute, but that wasn't long before she got swooped up into a teaching position at Costa Mesa. And currently, she's an instructional coach facilitating the professional development for the staff. She's focused on the rigorous instruction while building those meaningful relationships with students. She truly cares about the school community, and she can regularly be seen at multiple events. So we want to congratulate you. What an accomplishment. So equally impressive, Rosina Telemontes. So we want you to have your moment as well. So Rosina earned her National Board Certification, English as a New Language, Early Adolescence Through Young Adulthood. So a little bit different of a focus, which they were able to do. And she has only been with us for three years. And during that time, she's been with us in the multilingual program, supporting our secondary teachers with curriculum implementation and designated and integrated ELD. She also works directly and connects with our students throughout the district by providing them her, sorry, them support and making those connections and assisting them while they are setting achievement goals. So in her short time here, she certainly has made an impact with our students, and we just want to thank you. We're very fortunate that you've joined us.
Congratulations. Now we will move on to Student Board Member Reports with Trustee Weigand.
Thank you. Tonight is our last board meeting with our student board members because by the next time, our next meeting, it'll be the last week of school and they'll be off graduating or going on to be rising seniors. So today, the report topic is, since this is your last board meeting, please let us know what you thought of your experience as a student board member, and then please share two campus highlights. So first, we are going to start with Brianna Garcia, who's on the dais today.
Hello and good evening, Superintendent Smith, President Crane, and esteemed board members. To begin, I would like to say that being a student board member this year has been such an educational and great experience. The entire board has been very welcoming and respectful of our schedules as I know that as high school students, days are sometimes very busy and packed with an overload of events and assignments. I am beyond grateful that this position has introduced me to such great people. Being a board member, however, has not only allowed me to make great connections with these adults, but it has also allowed me to be a voice for many students at our school. I've loved being able to represent Newport Harbor at such important meetings and in front of such a large audience. This position gave me the opportunity to give groups and people at Harbor, who may be too scared to speak out, a chance to be heard. This is definitely an experience that has taught me a lot and showed me a new perspective on all the things that go on in our district. And so now I'm going to move on to talking about the two highlights. And it was really hard to narrow it down this time because there's just so much going on with the end of the school year. But our first campus highlight is an event we call Evening of the Arts, which actually hasn't happened. It's next Wednesday, May 22. And Evening of the Arts highlights both our visual and performing arts along with our culinary classes. Each year, a theme is picked, and this year is an '80s theme. The night begins with culinary food booths where groups of students have dedicated many hours into making food and designing props for their booth. Culinary sells their foods, and it is a great way to see and taste all of the hard work they have put in. After you grab some food, you are then welcome to walk through the gym to see the art displayed from students in our art classes, such as APR, Art 1 &amp; 2, ceramics, photography, and drawing. Lastly, the night ends with a vocal pop show from both Newport Harbor and Enson's Vocal Music. This is a great and fun opportunity to see all the hard work put in by all the different art programs at Harbor. So like I said, this is next week on Wednesday, the 22nd at 5:00 P.M. If you wanted to get a taste or see or hear what the Visual and Performing Arts Department looks at Harbor. And our second campus highlight was last month's academic rally. The academic rally is held each year where we highlight students who have been working hard in their classes throughout this school year. We recognize our Students of the Year for each department. So for example, there's a Math Student of the Year, an English Student of the Year, and so on. We also recognize our valedictorians and other groups such as student athletes who not only put in the work on the field or court or pool, but who also put in the work in school by showing the teams who have a combined GPA of 3.8 or higher. This is a unique rally since it focuses mostly on academics and is a nice way to show how important it is to keep your grades up at school and motivate students to finish strong in this last stretch of the school year right before finals. As we enter these final couple of weeks of the school year, we are excited to send off our seniors and keep the spirits high at Newport Harbor through many events such as prom, which is this weekend, our spring rally, and much more. It has been a pleasure representing Newport Harbor as our student board member this year, and I'm still thankful for this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Brianna. That was wonderful. The next presenter is Sailor Reddick from Montevista High School.
Good evening, school board. As I wrote my final speech for this evening, I found myself feeling a mix of emotions. I'm really looking forward to the opportunities that being a student board member will open up for me in the future, and I'm excited to apply the skills I've learned. But at the same time, I'm sad it's coming to an end. I'll miss the experiences and the relationships I've formed, and it's hard to believe that this is my last student board meeting as a student representative from Montevista Independent Studies. This experience has changed me in so many ways, and I'm so thankful I was given the chance to have been a part of it. When asked to reflect on my time as a student board member, I was able to acknowledge my own personal growth I have experienced. This role has not only deepened my understanding of educational governance, but has also given me confidence when public speaking. And I'm thrilled to share that my experience here has empowered me to take on the role of the speaker at my upcoming graduation, which I am more than excited for. On top of that, serving as a student board member has given me a passion for becoming more engaged with the youth inside our community and beyond it. I have extended my involvement beyond the boardroom, now working as a youth instructor for the city of Newport Beach and a swim instructor at Aquatots. And for my senior project, I was able to raise over $1,000 in donations for ABA students at Lincoln Elementary with moderate to severe disabilities. This role proved to me that though I am young and still have vast amounts of knowledge to learn, I am able to make an impact on those around me. I've loved being able to connect with and support the youth in our community, and I'm eager to continue this work as I transition into college. As I say goodbye to my role as a student board member, I carry with me cherished memories and invaluable lessons learned. But before I conclude, I'd like to share two of our most recent campus highlights at Montevista Independent Studies. Firstly, I want to acknowledge the recent Teacher Appreciation Week held from May 6th to May 10th. Our school community came together to celebrate and honor our dedicated educators in a week filled with gratitude and appreciation. On Monday, we brought flowers. On Tuesday, we brought a gift. On Wednesday, we brought notes. On Thursday, we brought food. And on Friday, we were tasked to surprise our teacher. I personally really enjoyed this opportunity of giving back to the teachers, and I know many of my peers did as well. Secondly, I am proud to highlight the initiative taken by Montevista Independent Studies to celebrate our graduating seniors. Every Friday at 1:00 P.M., seniors gather in the outside lunch area of our campus for Senior Fridays, where we are able to play games, enjoy complimentary snacks, and savor the final moments with our fellow graduates. Before I conclude, I want to extend my sincerest gratitude to the school board and all attendees for the opportunity to serve... for the opportunity to serve as a student board member. Your support and guidance has been so appreciated and I am deeply grateful for the experience and memories I will carry with me into the future.
Thank you so much Sailor. I can, this is my favorite part of the board meeting. I think it's just amazing to hear from you students and to just see what the work that we do in our district and see it pay off with all of our student board members and students out there. So, wish you guys well in your next endeavors and it's been great having you. Thank you.
Thank you. We now move on to Harbor Council PTA Report. Martha Flor, who I believe will be the next president, right?
Yes, I will.
Beginning July 1st.
Correct. Madam President, Superintendent Smith, and fellow board members. My name is Martha Flor. I am the Harvard Council PTA Program's VP, as well as most of you know. This is kind of weird. This is really weird. I would like to give a couple of announcements with us. We had our HSA, Harbor Council Luncheon on May 6th. We were thrilled to share the success of our recent PTA Honorary Service Awards. We had over 180 participants and well over 100 of those were honorary award recipients from the various schools in our district. We were also honored to recognize our council honorees and that was our very own Jeff Trader, who served as our MC, Andrea McCrery, who is our VP of Membership, and Cynthia Strassman, who is our current Harbor Council PTA President, who made significant contributions to our Council PTA. The support and engagement of our community was evident throughout the event and showcasing the strong bond we share with the district and our schools. We also are just coming back from our Harvard, the 4th District and the State PTA Convention and we have in our midst a Reflections winner that went on to the state and she was recognized at the convention for Outstanding Interpretation Winner. This is a special art student. Her name is Isabella Juarez Vadia. The title of her painting was Title: A Hope of Power. She's a 9th grader from Corona Del Mar Middle and High School. Being autistic makes me different. Sometimes it keeps me from having a good communication with the world and make connections with the world and other teenagers. I am not as independent as any other teenager in my school. Sometimes I feel chained, but I feel hopeful that one day I will find the freedom I desire through my art. I'm hopeful that one day, every piece of my art will be able to tell a story. The swallow symbol of hope for every sailor. For me, hope is freedom.
Next, we will have the CSEA Report.
Good evening, President Crane, trustees, Superintendent Smith, Cabinet, and guests. We want to congratulate both the certified and the classified employees of the year. Thank you all for your excellence. CSEA Chapter 18 budgets $4,000 every year for scholarships for member dependents. This year, our, this year, our Scholarship Committee selected six recipients for the awards. Kira Johnson, whose mother is a health assistant from Sonora. Brandon Croft, whose mother is Secondary Office Support Specialist at Corona Del Mar. Andrea McAllister, whose mother is here, School Community Facilitator from Costa Mesa. Karash, whose mother is also here, Shirin, Administrative Assistant 1 from Lindbergh. Mateo Evans, whose mother is a school office assistant from Polerino. And Vanessa Castillo, whose mother is a health assistant from Davis. We're very proud of these students and we wish them all a bright future. I had mentioned at last month's meeting that our Executive Board had an opening for Second Vice President when Lewis Truaxton left us and I just wanted to update you and let you know that Lynn Aldridge, Nutrition Services Assistant 2 from Newport Heights is now our Second Vice President. You may also remember at April's meeting that Ann Terry, our Communications Officer, spoke about CSAP and about the wonderful community at College Park. She thanked the district for its support during the morning, during their mourning for a staff who had recently passed. Unfortunately, Ann has also resigned from our Executive Board and with her permission, I am sharing her story. She and her family of five live in Costa Mesa near Harbor and Wilson. Every year, their rent increases. The three-bedroom condominium they rent is now over $4,000 a month and the cost is not just not affordable and sustainable. They are struggling to find affordable housing in the area and are considering relocating to Temecula. Ann loves her job and her work and her family and plans to continue to make the commute. I highlight her story as it is increasingly the story of many classified employees. We wish Ann and her family the best and thank you for her continued dedication to the district and the students. Angie Minor from Newport Heights School Administrative Assistant has replaced her as Communications Officer. And then, lastly, Aurora Gomez, our Parliamentarian, has resigned from the district, so we will be electing a Parliamentarian at our next chapter meeting. Amidst all the busyness of our Executive Board, we find ourselves approaching Classified School Employee Week, which is May 19th through the 25th. And I see you guys are adopting Resolution 20A, hopefully, later, and which solidifies Classified School Employee Week and its celebration. So, we participate with the district and there's a program which many of you know and have participated in, ACE Day, Appreciating Classified Employees, which will be happening May 23rd. CSEA and the district work together to pair administrators with classified employees. Administrators get to see firsthand what the day of a classified employee looks like. I know many of you have signed up to participate. Thank you very much. It's a wonderful tradition and an opportunity to see exactly how classified employees support students. On that same day in the evening, our chapter will be holding a celebration for our members at Acapulco with food, fun, and many prizes. So, we look forward to continuing to do the good work for students, staff, and the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is the NMFT Report with Rhonda.
Good evening, President Crane, trustees, Dr. Smith, Cabinet, and guests here tonight. I just have a short update, but it's big. And big, a big yet thank you is in order. I want to thank Leona Olson and Jeff Trader. Two weeks ago, we had a thoughtful and caring conversation that resulted in last week of an agreement that our educators will now receive their first check for the 2024-25 school year in August instead of September, which is, it's been almost, people are very excited about that. Before this, they waited nearly two months for their first check and really, as someone pointed out, three months from their previous check from the last year. So, at the first email release of this news, I received hundreds of emails. It took me hours to get through them that first night. So, one of our newer employees wrote me and said, "I have a newborn. You have no idea what this will do for my young family." And then, a seasoned educator simply said, "This is a lifesaver for my family." So, there is many, many more just heartfelt thanks and gratitude for this. So, I want to thank Leona Olson, sorry, Leona Olson and Jeff Trader. Thank you. You did, you did good by our educators.
Next, we move on to Community Input on Non-Agendaized Items. Trustee Solju, could you please read?
This is an opportunity for the public to address the board regarding items not on the regular meeting agenda. Comments on non-agenda topics are limited to three minutes per comment, up to 20 minutes per topic. A speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another person by order of the Brown Act, Section 54954.2. The board will take no action nor have any discussion on non-agendaized items. The Superintendent may provide clarification during Superintendent comments.
Thank you. I call on Alexandra Mandel to come up. And next, after Alexandra, is Shirin Nazari. Do you need?
Does Alexandra need to go first?
Alexandra.
I didn't want to be first.
So, you're Shirin?
I'm Shirin.
Yes, you are.
And look, I typed everything up and then I said, "That's no good," so then I, you know, had to edit everything.
You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Board President Crane, Board Members, and Dr. Smith. I'm here, my name is Shirin, and I'm here to talk to you about employee retention and the Classified Summer Savers Program. I'm a former 10-month employee who, back in 2009, had to quit because I couldn't afford to work there. Now, I'm watching other 10-month staff live my experience and it's breaking my heart. At the end of each school year, they are presented with a letter of intent. While they appreciate the promise of continued employment, it prevents them from collecting unemployment or other benefits. They shouldn't have to need public assistance to begin with because for them, really needing that is something that is embarrassing and, you know, kind of humiliating. Here at Newport Mesa, we are amazing at attracting talent, but we have trouble keeping talent. Sorry, I got to put this on. As the 23-24 school year comes to an end, staff compete for the limited available summer positions and part-time hours. The lucky ones that manage to get hired will accept lower hourly pay. If history has taught us anything, many 10-month classified staff will quit over the summer and will all be scrambling to fill those positions for the next school year. This is an inefficient way to conduct business. Successful corporations dedicate enormous energy in retention because they know turnover costs money. The payroll hours, HR hours, training hours spent on new staff is a waste of resources, not to mention that we all get better and better the longer we do our jobs. The experience we gain leaves us, when we quit, leaves with us when we quit. The staff who stay behind are left frustrated as they have to start at zero and train another person when they could have started the year with an already trained and experienced person. Please say yes to the Summer Savers Program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Roseanne Andress.
Greetings, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Smith, President Crane, Cabinet, and guests. My name is Roseanne Andress. I am an Instructional Assistant in the Early Learning Department at Newport Coast Elementary, working in the TK classroom, our youngest, most vulnerable learners in this district. I love my job as an Instructional Assistant for the TK program. I have over 30 years in early childhood education and I take pride in the services and care that I provide our youngest learners. I am here today to speak in support of the available funding for Classified School Employees' Summer Assistance Program, otherwise known as CSAP. The 23-24 state budget package provided $90 million in funding for classified school employees for the Summer Assistance Program, or otherwise known as CSAP. The California Department of Education has appropriated funds to participating local education agencies to provide a dollar-for-dollar match on amounts that can be withheld from participating classified school employees based on their monthly paychecks. Newport Mesa Unified School District will not be participating for this year or next school year. In accordance with the California Ed Code, Section 45500, LEAs have the option to elect to participate and establishes CSAP as an ongoing basis when funding is available. $90 million was available, but it was not applied for. That is money that could be in my pocket, our pockets, because we need to survive during the summer. Making $20 an hour just doesn't cut it and this would be really helpful. I strongly urge the district to reconsider participation for the 25-26 school year. This money does provide substantial income for our lowest-income earners in the district during the summer. I'm currently setting aside $300 of my own paycheck that is with school's first federal credit union Summer Saver Program, but unfortunately, it's not a dollar-for-dollar match and I'm only going to be reaping about maybe $200 in interest. According to the 2018 Kids' Data Report, the family self-sufficiency standard for one adult and one teenage child, which is what I have, is $45,759. I make less than half of that. My annual salary is less than half of that and I strongly urge the board to please reconsider. I'm one of the lucky ones. I have a husband that can provide for me, but there are so many other teachers in my position and classified staff that don't have what I have. So, I am speaking here on behalf of all of those others that can't and I'm just tired of living in poverty. I live in a great area, Orange County, Costa Mesa. I live in Huntington Beach, but I strongly urge you to do this. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to call on Alexandra Mandel. Are you here? Alexandra? All right, so we'll move on to Debbie Leonard.
Hello, good evening. I'm Debbie Leonard. I am, good evening, Dr. Smith, Board of Trustees, Executive Cabinet, and guest. I'm a member of the Costa Mesa High School Football Boosters and a parent to a student athlete. Our boys' locker room was in need of repair and we recently completed some major renovations. I just want to thank you on behalf of the boosters, the coaches, and the student athletes, who are proud recipients of new flooring, lockers, and team seating in the players' and coaches' meeting room. I just wanted to say we're very thankful and we just wanted to express that today. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Dr. Smith, any comments?
Yeah, glad that we got that room ready for football season. The timing is impeccable. I'm sure that's worth two or three victories anyway, on the natural. But kudos to Jeff and the team and Odd and everybody for putting in the work expeditiously to get that turned around. The Summer Assistance Program has come several times. I did just want to, because part of my role is to provide clarification. When the board is urged to reconsider, I just want to be clear, the board has nothing to consider right now. There are items that we collectively bargain. Our groups are involved in that process right now. We are excited about the energy that we started the process with. As I've said multiple times, we are extremely hopeful that within our common interest, we find a resolution that is mutually agreeable. So, we look forward to that happening. But to be clear, there's nothing in front of the board to reconsider at this point, just for clarification's sake. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Do we have any agendaized public comments? I don't see any in front of me. All right then, we'll move right along to Item 17, Achievement. Good evening, Dr. Torres.
Good evening, Board President Crane, trustees, Dr. Smith, Cabinet, and community. There we are. Good evening. I think we have a mass exodus. I'm going to wait 30 seconds.
We're noticing the new projectors.
I know how to clear a room. This isn't the first time this has happened.
We can comment on the new projectors. They're very nice. They're very nice.
Did you notice? Well, good evening. It's our pleasure tonight to bring to you, as we're starting to get closer to the end of this school year, a presentation tonight to highlight some of our student supports, focusing this evening on PBIS and our elementary counselors. Tonight, in front of you, you have myself. I am our Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Education, having the pleasure to serve all of our 7 through 12 campuses. And with me tonight is Dr. Jennifer Pena, who is our Coordinator of Student Services. Just to remind everyone, we also have a couple of other members of our Student Services team who could not be here tonight. We have Sarah Coley, who's our Administrative Director, Paula Litz, who is our Coordinator of Elementary, and Angela Allen Hess, who is our Child Welfare and Attendance. And together, we make up Student Services. One of the items that we really care about when we think about Student Services is really maintaining and supporting the environments and the learning environments for our students. And so our mission is really to do whatever we can to be able to create safe and respectful learning environments. And those are colored by things like ensuring that students feel comfortable coming to school, that we provide opportunities where they learn how to engage with diverse individuals and communities, where they end up being able to engage in a positive manner and learn to be upstanders. And so all of the work and resources that we dedicate to Student Services really go to enhance and color that environment. And so tonight, you're going to hear about some of the work that we're doing specifically in that arena to ensure that we create these really safe, strong, and loving learning One of the ways that we've achieved that over the past couple of years is through the Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports Program. And I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Pena, and she works directly with our PBIS program and is going to share the next couple of slides with you.
Thank you. Good evening, President Crane, Trustees, Dr. Smith, Board, and all of our guests that are still here. It is my pleasure to share with you what Student Services is doing K-12 when it comes to behavioral supports. PBIS has been in our district for many years. This year, we have created a renewed sense of energy within PBIS. For those of you who don't know what PBIS is, it is a Positive Behavioral Intervention Supports System. It's really a framed framework in which we evaluate our behavior systems. It is evidence-based, and it improves positive student behavior, reinforces those school-wide behaviors, and that's really done through our matrices, which I'll show you in just a second. It allows for us to create equitable and safe learning environments for students, and when we have the behaviors that we would like to see, it's very easy to teach the students and make sure that teachers are also happy. As far as the matrices, they are done by a student, sorry, a parent and student and staff team. So that's the idea, is that all stakeholders get together and create these behavior matrices. I've selected two to share with you. One is a secondary lens. The other one is an elementary lens, the Mesa Way. They have, Costa Mesa was a part of our Tier One reboot this year, and super excited that they really redid their matrices. All of these also align with the board policies, and you can kind of see what they came up with. Really, it's specific to what are the expectations that we want in all of these different areas on campus. The elementary is very similar, but most elementary, they actually explicitly teach all of these through Flag Deck, right? So they go ahead and show them each of those different areas and tell the kids, this is how we behave. When the expectations are very clear, of course, students can then abide by those. The reboot, what we did this year, was seven of our elementary schools participated. We partnered with OCDE for a two-day training, and then four of our secondary schools participated in that training. And it really was for our Tier One behavior systems. The second thing that we did was we also had a special cohort that was with California Elementary. There was a unique need to really revamp the entire system of behaviors there, and therefore we did, we worked with OCDE and did an intensive work with them. OCDE went to their site and worked with the entire site, as well as with their PBIS team. And so excited for Kellybrook and Mariners. They already had a very solid Tier Ones. They did not need to do the reboot. They participated in a CAISP grant work through OCDE, which really was developing their Tier Two and Tier Three systems. There's three days of work with the PBIS team, and then OCDE worked with them through the year on six different modules that the entire staff worked on. There are 11 schools in our district that currently have applied for state recognition. This is an increase from six of last year, so we're super excited that we have more sites that are applying for PBIS recognition. Our expectation is that our elementary schools will all apply for Silver Recognition next year, so we definitely want to continue to support them. Just to give you a little insight on what the different recognitions are, Bronze is really a Tier One. They have a system in place. They have scored at least 40% to 70% on the tiered fidelity inventory. That's a rubric that is given through PBIS that the sites have to go ahead and rate themselves based on. An outside evaluator, called an Acer, comes in and actually helps with that process as well. The Silver Recognition is a very solid Tier One. They have to score at least 70% or higher on their Tier One inventory. Now, Gold and Silver get a little bit more exciting, right? So they have to also not only have a solid Tier One, they have to have a solid Tier Two and Tier Three. Gold, they have to have one or the other, and Platinum, they have to have all three. So we are super excited that we do have a bunch of recipients of Platinum and more that are coming to go ahead and be recognized next year. Our plan for next year is to have a variety of training options so that we can meet the needs of each of our school sites. The first option is to give that Tier One reboot to any of the schools that did not participate this year and would like to participate next year. Those schools that have a very solid Tier One or already participated in the reboot, we would like to give them the opportunity to really enhance their Tier Two and Tier Three. There's also an opportunity for schools to do the grant work with OCDE, so that California ISP grant work, it is a two-year commitment. In addition, we also would like to help those schools that did the reboot for the Tier One and would really like to just focus on the work that they started this year into next year, and we can support that. And finally, if there's any sites that are interested in more of that targeted support like California had, we'd be willing to offer that as well.
You heard Dr. Pena talk about leveled support. We look at Tier One, we look at Tier Two, and we look at Tier Three. We need to ensure that we're continuing to build out a system that addresses the needs of students at each of those levels. One of those Tier Three supports, the Tier Two or Tier Three supports, is restorative practices. And so you have heard us speak of restorative practices in the past, but really, we are focused on ensuring that we provide students the opportunity to understand what they've done when they have not met the behavior expectations outlined in everything you've seen tonight. So when a student fails to meet the expectations of the matrices that you saw, what happens, right? And so we want to ensure that students understand how they did not meet the expectation, what happened, and what could we do to really improve that behavior. And restorative practices helps us work with students and has students be a part of the solution. Instead of doing things to them, we do it with them. And we have trained professionals in our organization who focus that work. Restorative practices really help focus on restoring the relationship or healing the relationship. So when something has happened, we want to fix it. That's just natural, and we want to fix it, and we want to ensure that the relationship's intact. So the next couple of slides that you're going to hear and hear about tonight are focused on exactly that. And we have used the International Institute for Restorative Practices as our benchmark for this type of training and this type of work.
And I had the pleasure this year of becoming a trainer of trainers for the restorative practices and was able to train some of our staff this year, and it was probably my highlight of the entire year, are those training days. It was moving and very inspirational. So I just kind of wanted to share with you where we've been and where we're going. So the, in the 2019 to 2020 school years, we were able to train 90 of our staff members. Most of those were teachers, psychologists, counselors, and administrators. In the 2023 to 2024 school year, we've trained 53 staff members. The focus this year has been on new counselors, new administrators, and our school community facilitators. Next year, we would like to continue that training and really focus on our teachers, any new administrators, and new counselors as well. If you can see the pictures down below, those were from this year's trainings. It is a very interactive training in which we really dive into what the strategies are. Those are effective questioning, effective statements, impromptu conversations, formal conferences, and there's an entire day on circles. And so circles go the gamut, right? And so we go from really like community-building circles all the way to those restorative relationship building. The premise of restorative practices is to do 80% proactive strategies so that we build those relationships, we have those strong bonds with the kids, so that when something happens and we have to do the restorative and we have to repair, we already had a relationship to begin with, so that we're only supposed to really work on that for 20%. So we really have focused a lot on those 80% community-building circles and restorative practices. Thank you.
One of our restorative practices partnerships, excuse me, that we have brought on is Project Kinship. And so while we have the amazing Dr. Pena, who is able to be a trainer of trainer for restorative practices within our district, we also wanted to elevate some of the experiences for some of our students who are experiencing particular types of issues in our community. And so we sought out a partnership with Project Kinship. And Project Kinship is a company, an organization, excuse me, that was established in Santa Ana, California, really out of the need of solving some of the most critical urban issues in their community. And their founder really wanted to expand through Orange County, and so he really has developed a restorative practices program for students who really struggle with different types of violence, domestic violence, drug use, and gang activity. And so what we have this year is they have provided us with intervention specialists, otherwise known as a Project Kinship counselor, to help us with technical assistance, strategies, and resources to assist not only our students, but their parents as well. So what that looks like is we have a counselor who is dedicated at a school site, and they do ongoing work with students who are on their case, case managed, and then also any other students who may have, you know, an episode or a problem, and they'll bring them in, and then they'll work with them. And they will also support the families in this model, and then eventually, they do work in a larger scale at the school, as Dr. Pena has described, with groups and circles of students to be able to help build those relationships and heal any types of divisions that might be occurring on site. In 23-24, we had Project Kinship at Estancia, Mesa, and Back Bay. And then for next school year, we are adding Teawinkle and Newport Harbor. And so we're very excited to be able to expand that partnership. The principals at the three schools where it is currently established have reported back levels of success and are looking to build the program. Anytime something's new, it needs to, you know, grow roots and plant their roots and grow. So here we are, and we're looking forward to adding Teawinkle and Newport Harbor. In addition to the restorative practices, in addition to PBIS, those are all opportunities for school-wide systems to be able to come in and create behavior expectations for students. But one of the great investments that our Board of Education made was to ensure that every elementary school had an elementary counselor. So we went from 11 elementary counselors to 22 elementary counselors, and that program was full throttle this year. And so we're thrilled to be able to have the 22 individuals serving our campuses. And they have been very, very effective this year. I'm sure if you've visited any elementary school site, principals would tell you, or have probably said, "Thank you." This has been one of the best resources that we could have provided to our elementary program. Our elementary counselors are focused in their work. They, as you read that infographic, really do several different levels of work. They support students with the basics, social skills, you know, learning how to work with others, literally like just those interactions with young students. They do PBIS and restorative practices as well. You heard Dr. Pena talk about training. They have been trained, and every time we got a new counselor, we made sure to include them in that training. We've engaged them to do parent education. They are part of our Student Success Team. You'll hear the acronym SST a lot when we have students who have challenges, either academically or behaviorally. And so our counselors sometimes lead and/or are a part of that SST process. They've gone into classrooms and supported teachers, to help teachers with strategies, to help students who might be exhibiting some interesting behaviors in the classroom or demonstrating struggles. They collaborate with everyone in the district, so we bring them onboard to integrate with our high school counselors. We have had them as part of our Student Services Team. We've had them in, as part of our MTSS work that we've done. So they're part of a, they're a collaborative partner and invited to many different rooms to be able to participate and learn about all the systems in the district. And then finally, we ensure that they're supporting our community partnership. So anytime we have a community partner who comes in to support a campus, the counselor is involved in that. All of the counselors are part of our Student Services Team, and Paula Litz, who could not be here this evening, our Coordinator of Elementary. She oversees their work, trains them monthly, checks in, visits them, and supports their efforts. But really, just highlighting the fact that they're really one of the best advocates for the PBIS program in helping really establish those behavior expectations as students matriculate up and down through the office when they come in, and they have to have those conversations. And you know, really, the highlights could go on and on and on, but we've done a lot of training with our counselors, and one of the new areas of support that we are looking at is attendance and intervention. And so you've heard us discuss before, and you've seen the data, that our chronic absenteeism continues to be a challenge, and we continue to work on our attendance numbers. And so that's something counselors can help lean into, and so that's like kind of the next frontier, is we're really going to continue to dig into attendance. And then you've heard us discuss a little bit about the Tier One and Tier Two behavior supports. So they really have a lot of different hats that they wear, but all in terms of student support. And then the next time that I'm in front of you, maybe this summer, maybe through the LCAP, we're figuring out where we're going to put this amazing data, is we are collecting data on the efficacy of the Elementary Counselor Program, and what do 22 individuals do, and how many times have they done that? And so we are looking at collecting data, and you'll see that bulleted list of all the things that we're asking for. We want to know how many threat assessments they've conducted. We want to know how many parent nights they've participated in. And you'll see a wide list of things, and then we'll have a place for other, because sometimes a counselor comes up with a unique idea that's specific to their site. But we want to be able to quantify what we're doing. We want to be able to share the efficacy. We want to be able to share the efficacy of the program with you. And so we do intend to bring that to you at either a later date, either through the potential LCAP data or a summer presentation as we continue to talk about student services and our supports. And then those are just some images for you, just to, you know, to see that there is an impact that happens on our school site and our youngest students who need the most attention and the most direction and set the expectations. We're so blessed to be able to have those 22 counselors doing that work. So that's our highlight tonight, brief but informative. And we are here to answer questions. And Dr. Pena knows all the answers.
Trustee, do you have any questions? I don't see any lights. Trustee Wigan.
Yes, I just, for everyone here, what would be an example that you can give us of, say, a tier one and a tier two intervention that we would have with a student?
Sure. When it comes to like PBIS in particular, the tier one is really that matrix because that's for all students. So tier one is for all students. Tier two is for many, and then tier three is for some, right? That's kind of how the matrices goes. So a behavior plan would be for a like a tier two would be for a student who is exhibiting some escalations here and there, but not for all students, right? And so we would come up with a behavior plan for them. Maybe it's a chart, what that might be, and collect data to then support them to do the appropriate behaviors. And that's the data that they then collect for the tier two. For tier three, a lot of it is special ed. And there are actual like assessments that are done for BIPS, their behavior plans that are done at that tier three level.
And tier one could be like an assembly where everybody's learning, when we go to the bathroom, we say nice things like this, we do things like this. When we're in the hallway, we do things like this. It's something everybody experiences together. So like you're clearly saying what the rules are in positive language, in ways that students understand in every context, like this is what a good student shows up like, this is what a good friend shows up like, in very succinct, sticky language for students that makes sense to them, teaching them what we expect from them. That's for everybody.
And it's done in a positive way versus like a don't do, right? So it's not a like, don't do this, don't do that, because then they don't know what the replacement behavior is. So they just need to know what their behavior is.
We wouldn't say, stop running in the halls. We'd say, we walk in our hallways, right? So it's the way that we phrase things. It's redirection. And even in our high school setting, that's what we do, right? So cell phones don't belong out. Cell phones are put away here. So it's the language that we use. And then if somebody decided, hey, I'm not going to put away my cellphone, then a tier two intervention is, well, you have a choice to either put your cellphone away or you're going to place it in my office. What would you like to do? So and then it becomes, oh, tier three, we're taking that away, and it's a phone call home. So it kind of levels up. And that's the practicality of the daily approach. I think what Dr. Pena was also referring to, if you look at a system approach, once you've done tier one for a student, and then you've gone to tier two for a student, and then finally, you're going to tier three for a student, that could be where the intersection for special education comes in. After we've really looked at every single opportunity to support a student in the first levels, that would be where we could go. We don't always go there, but we could go there. Yeah.
Thank you. Trustee Barto?
Yes, thank you. Similar question. I got some feedback from someone in a different district, and they were talking about their behavioral intervention plans and how it felt like they weren't set up to for students to be successful, like right off the bat, they didn't know what they were expected to do because it was things like if a student had a special ed, how are, you know, your expectation is that you'll sit up in class, you know, for the rest of the year while they have, you know, some thing that causes that to not be a reasonable behavior. I feel like with PBIS and a lot of other things, we really have meaningful and achievable behavioral intervention plans. But how do we design those in kind of in a way that allows a student to be able to succeed and not be defeated from the beginning?
Well, when you think about the SST process and you think about a team of educators coming together in the best interests of that student, ideally, they'd be designing a plan that is going to reflect the ability for a student to be successful, right? So those individuals in the room should be able to create something that colors the experience for that student, that meets the desired outcome, that's not a, you know, just a copy and paste from somebody else's behavior plan. But if I have trouble self-regulating, what are you going to create for me as a student that's going to meet my needs in my classroom? And that's what that team comes together to do, is to be able to help those conversations so that whatever the parent and and school agrees on, these are the things we think your child can do.
Thank you.
And that's the ideal. I'm sure there are spaces where maybe sometimes that doesn't happen as effectively as it should, but that's the way that it's designed to operate.
Thank you. I really appreciate that.
Thank you. Trustee Ersoylo?
Yes, thank you so much. Thank you for all the work you've done at California Elementary in particular. As many of you know, that was an issue when my daughter was there, leading to our removal of her in fifth and a half grade from California due to just the negative culture that we found to be there. So thank you so much for doing that at California. On the next front, so the systems, you know, approach that you were mentioning, what's the process for integrating like, you know, you have like Project Kinship, then you have Groundswell, then you have whatever training they went through in 2019 that you mentioned, like what's the process for integrating all those different models? Because sometimes people have different jargons and different ways of looking at like approaching restorative practices. How are like, are all your providers meeting quarterly or somehow to get everybody kind of on the same jargon page?
Yes, we have a lot of edgy babble, so thank you for that. And we do have to calibrate. And so one of the things that we've done at the secondary level is originally, we only had counselors, right? And so then we brought in the Project Kinship counselors. And so those counselors are part of the site teams, meetings, and discussions to be able to wrap the same language around or use similar language. And then as we continue to bring on partners, that's what we would intend to do. So you mentioned Groundswell. Tonight on the agenda, later in our consent, there is an opportunity for you to approve a Groundswell contract, which would have different layers of supports that they would be able to do at some of and at 11 of our schools next year. And in doing so, to answer your question is, yes, they'd be brought on. This is the work that we're doing. This is how our systems are working. This is the way we currently approach restorative practices. How does what you're doing fits in? And while every time we onboard a new partner, we ask those questions. How can we interview them? Are you a good fit for us? This is what we currently have, and how do you fit into that? Yeah.
Awesome. And then one last plug for, thank you for doing the the impact metrics that you have for what the counselors are doing. One thing that jumped out was the lunch bunch, the number hosted. Can you also track the number of attendees at lunch bunches? Because we know lunch bunches could be hosted and maybe.
No one come.
So if they could track who comes to the lunch bunch?
Yes. And if pizza's served, because then there's going to be a long line and then, yes. But I will, we'll add that to the list, absolutely. Mm-hmm. And we're always trying new things. So to your point about lunch bunch like that isn't necessarily something that all schools experience, we're trying to get everybody there. And see if it works, and see if there is interest, and see if behaviors do go down if you have some facilitated activities during lunchtime for students in places where kids can feel safe.
Trustee Anderson?
Thank you. Yes, following up on that, I also love that. Are we going to have access to that? Will you guys report kind of what you're seeing, some themes, maybe across different age groups, I think would be really helpful to see? And I was wondering, do we often get the elementary counselors together? Do they discuss like best practices, some common concerns they're seeing? How often do they do that if they do if they do that currently?
Yes, great question. So they do meet monthly. They do come together. We rotate sites. Last meeting I was at was at Davis. They hosted, and Paula Litz oversees that group. She facilitates the discussions and has an agenda, not only for sharing, but for training. And so at our last meeting, that's when we decided we really want to ensure we collect those metrics, shared that out. And so they have until the end of May. Originally, it was April 5th, but we extended it because we had some, a lot of activity on our sites. And so counselors were seeing more kids, so we wanted to capture the month of May as well.
Awesome. And then I was wondering, you know, I love an infographic, as Annette knows. This is great. Do we share this elementary counselor slide out? Do we, how often do we present this to parents? Does everyone know? Because this is the first time I've, I love it. It's the first time I've seen it, though.
Yeah. And so I would say that that's an inconsistent practice at this point, but we do have the infographic. I know that it does and has been shared in some school settings with parents. We modified it a couple of times this year. We kind of tweaked it just to be more more true to the work that they ended up doing. I created one when we first hired all the counselors, and I had some thoughts about what counselors were going to be doing. And then as they got to work, they said, that's great, but by the way, we're doing this. So we modified that. And I do think there's a place for it in PTA meetings, school site council, D-Lax, just to let people know this is what level of support your student can expect. So that's something I can work on with Dr. Ser and Socorro Shields to ensure that we're rolling it out. We're reviewing it at the end of the year, just so you know. So there are a few documents that we have for elementary counseling, and we're just in that space right now where is this really where we want to keep it? And then if so, then we'll have it ready to go for the new year.
Wonderful. Yes, I'm really excited about this. I know this is something that principals, teachers, parents were asking for desperately, I think almost every conversation that I had on elementary sites. So the more that we can communicate this and everyone knows about it, the better. So thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. I could see this being a natural for like a parent ed series and encouraging some of those students' parents to sign up for it so that they're engaged and they can learn a couple of things. And, you know, we all could learn how to do, you know, parent better and develop skills. So if we can keep that in mind, I would encourage that as being part of a parent ed series.
Thank you. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to our consent calendar. Do I have a motion to? Do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved. Second.
Okay, Trustee Anderson moved it, and Trustee Pearson seconded it. Are there any amendments that need to be made, Dr. Smith?
We just have a correction on 18B6. I put the wrong amount in. So they didn't like raise their price all of a sudden when they realized they were working with me. We just had the wrong number. So it lists in the item 150,000. It's 185. The contract is in front of you, and we have copies for the audience as well. So it's just a technical edit.
All right. Okay, so let's have a roll call vote with the motion, well amended, I guess. Should we first vote on the initial motion and then vote, vote it, and then have a substitute motion?
You have to change items.
Okay, just the amount. All right. So do we have any questions, discussions? All right, let's have a roll call vote.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Ersoylo?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
All right, consent calendar has been approved unanimously. Let's move on to discussion action calendar 19A, first reading and adoption of modifications to board policy. Assistant Superintendent Torres?
Yes. In front of you this evening, you have the student dress code policy that was revised. We are moving this one forward in front of you this evening because we are in the season of updating our student handbooks and preparing our matrices for PBIS for next year. And so we were seeking to have our policy updated. So that's why it's in front of you and was pulled out of our board workshop that we did. We had done all those modifications, but I did ask to bring this one forward so that it's current, so that I can go ahead and start doing work on district-wide dress code forums and task force, and then to update the student handbook.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Trustee Wigan moved it, and Trustee Ersoylo seconded it. Any comments, discussion?
Thank you for the timeliness. Ms. Carey, Ms. Torres, I think this is really something to have a district-wide plan and to start thinking systemically is really important. So thank you for bringing it forward.
And it can be ready for that fall packet. All right, so roll call vote, please.
Student board member Brianna Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Ersoylo?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Great, the motion passes unanimously. 19B, approve secondary textbooks for public display.
Yes.
Assistant Torres.
Yes, and so in front of you tonight, our first approval for secondary textbooks display, the current consideration is to update our AP courses. And so we have two courses in front of you tonight, the Practice of Statistics and Psychology. So AP Stats and AP Psychology. So those are updated texts.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Trustee Ersoylo, and a second?
Second.
All right, moved by Trustee Ersoylo and seconded by Trustee Wigan. Any comments, questions? All right, roll call vote, please.
Student board member Brianna Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Ersoylo?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you. The vote passes unanimously. Moving on to 19C, approve secondary science textbook for public display.
Yes, that's me again. And so tonight in front of you, you have the approval for science, secondary science textbook public display. Our secondary teachers in grades seven through 12 have been working on looking at new texts. Our nine through 12 teachers have selected Open SciEd. And so this item opens the public display for that.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Who was the second? Barto? Kate? Moved by Trustee Wigan and seconded by Trustee Barto. Questions, comments? All right, roll call vote, please.
Student board member Brianna Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Ersoylo?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Excellent. The motion passes unanimously. We're going fast. Going on to 19D, approve elementary math textbook for public display. Dr. Ser?
Yes, thank you. We are very excited to bring to you a recommendation for approving public display for illustrative mathematics, which will serve kindergarten through fifth grade. Currently, illustrative mathematics is in sixth grade and at the secondary level. Dr. Lori Hernandez worked with a fantastic group of teachers on special assignment and teachers within the committee to bring us this recommendation. We look forward to being able to come back to you in June and give you a full report and all the details of the work that's been done. But for public display, we will be able to email all of our families, provide digital access on the website directly to them. And if anyone would like to come in and see the materials in hard copies, they can just come to Elementary Education. We have the materials ready for review. And again, we look forward to bringing you a full report in June.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Yes, ma'am.
Who moved it?
Anderson.
Ersoylo moved it and seconded by Anderson. Okay. All right, and any questions? Trustee Anderson?
I have a comment. I'm extremely excited, excited about us having a K to 12 aligned curriculum for math. I think we all, this is a moment to celebrate for our district. So thank you so much. I'm really looking forward to hearing from the community and also seeing the presentation. But thank you for making that important step. I think it's huge for our community, for our teachers. Everyone learning the same thing is part of one system. Thank you.
Makes a lot of sense. Makes a lot of sense. Also good to know that these are all available in hard copy, in sandborne, and also digitally online. So parents, community members, you're all welcome to either use the digital versions, online, or come in person. Thank you. All right, so let's have a roll call vote.
Student Board Member Brianna Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Ersoilu?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Okay, the motion is voted unanimously. And let's go to 19E, approve the 2024 master plan recommendation. Mr. Trader?
All right, good evening. Here we are, and we're going to have some facility fun tonight. Let's take a look and see kind of where. Here we go. All right, so you'll recall that we've gone through a number of surveys, and this is not working, so I'm going to do this. So we had an initial online survey, right? And this was to cover pretty much, you know, very broad categories about things that could be done. And then we had in-person engagement sessions, you'll remember those, where we had the community come, staff, students, and we gathered comments about each site. And so that provided the architect with a lot of data to focus on. And then in April of '24, we presented the master plan. And then we did another second online survey. And this was more specific to actual solutions provided by the architect. So the architect took all of the in-person engagement, all of that first online survey, and then came up with some specific solutions to address those surveys and that feedback. And so here we are, second online survey that we're going to talk about tonight, where we got some prioritization feedback from various groups, communities, parents, students, staff, and so on. So you'll see here, this is kind of what folks looked like. They, we see at the top there, folks were using stickies, the online surveys, and then they were actually could use, rate some of these solutions, one to five, five being the highest. So when we look at the first engagement survey, we had 918 responses. You can see there how it was broken out by parents, employees, students, community members. And then the second survey, we had 1,430 responses. Similar kind of makeup, although a little higher on the employee side. And then here's a breakout of it by site. And this is just the number of participants who participated in the survey. Here's a heat map of all of those responses. And you can see from those responses that broken up by different groups, their communities, students, district staff, and so forth. The restrooms really kind of came in on top. I don't know about you, but that was a surprise to me. Kind of interesting. And then when we compare, let's, you know, when we compare parent ranking to student ranking. So in this regard, when we look at these, we can see there that dining, dining, fine dining, is number one for students by a fairly large margin compared to mid-level priority for parents, right? So students, man, dining is right on top. Instructional space and restrooms are high for both between these two groups, students and parents. Theater and NPR spaces are valued more by parents. That's probably logical, right? That makes sense. And then libraries are more important to students than they are for parents. Because, you know, the students are spending time there, parents maybe not so much. And then athletics and outdoor spaces were, you know, in the original survey, were really on top. But now they became mid-tier categories when folks actually had solutions that were presented to them. So that's kind of an interesting shift that happened there. And then when we look at comparing staff to community, this is interesting, too. So, you know, in comparison to the parents and students, staff value admin. You changes to the admin building and parking and NPR, those are near the top for staff. And then instructional space is mid to high importance for community and staff. Community members do value dining and food service facilities. That was interesting to me. I didn't realize that that would be really high for them, but it is. And then athletic and outdoor spaces move down in categories. Again, a little bit of a surprise in that regard. And so when we look at this, now, there's going to be different lenses, you know, for elementary versus secondary, right? And so when we look at all, take all of the survey engagement for the second survey in terms of priority, for elementary, restrooms are on top. They are on top, followed by instructional space and theater and NPRs, and then food service and dining. Now that mixes up. When you look at secondary, secondary, again, food service is on top and followed by instructional spaces, restrooms, then theater, NPR. So a little bit of a different take, secondary has a different take. And then when you put all these together, again, restrooms on top, instructional space, theater and NPR, followed by parking expansion, right? When you put everything together, parking expansion kind of rolls up there. So we know that we've been given direction from the board to move forward on safety. And we're doing that as quickly as we can, and we folded safety into the sequencing here of what we want to do. Now, let's talk about sequencing for a moment. This would be phase one. And so this is the whole heart of why we're here today, tonight, to get some feedback, direction from the board regarding sequencing. And if you've ever packed a moving van, you know that there is an order of operations. And that is, you put the big stuff in first or you're in big trouble. So this is about getting, we're making recommendations on what staff believes, based on this survey and based on your guidance, what the big stuff is to get in first. And so when we look at phase one, so phase one, these are projects that are already in, they're already in the fire. Already in the fire. $131.6 million in the fire right now. So when you look at that, we got the theater at Estancia. We have elementary classroom expansion. This is primarily associated with TK. We have Estancia campus improvements. This includes the old pool area. We're going to create a gathering space and some football space and some other things that are happening there. Newport Harbor High School Athletics and Costa Mesa High School Athletics. This is specific to the field renovation at Newport Harbor and then also at Costa Mesa. There's been a lot of interest in this, showed up in the survey, about expansion of the bleachers and then netting. Because we have baseballs rolling over onto the track, and so that's what, that is there. And then we have shade structure expansion. You got, the board's been very clear with us about expanding shade structures. And elementary school NPR ventilation and AV improvement. So the board, through the Irvine Endowment, gave us direction to move forward by funding the AV upgrades to the NPRs with the endowment. And we are doing that, and that's happening this summer. And along with some ventilation, some big fans that will help cool things down. And then the Newport Harbor, I'm sorry, Newport Elementary NPR and T-Winkle NPR HVAC. It really works better to have actual HVAC in those places and just not fans. And then elementary playgrounds are getting improved, and so we're structuring those. And then we have the Ensen Corona Del Mar Gym bleachers. Those bleachers are well beyond their useful life and need to be replaced. And then the Newport Harbor Aquatic Complex coming on board. So then when we look here, and then we got safety, right? These are all, again, phase one surveillance and active monitoring. That, we have a pilot going on right now. And we're really pleased and I'm actually really excited to get information to you about what the system can do, because it can do some fairly remarkable things that I think you'll be really pleased with. And then we have the door locks and hardware, the lobby security. This should all ring a bell with you. Ballards, exterior windows, tinting and coverings. Yet there's a contract, I believe, on this board agenda for the tinting of the windows, the shade coverings. And then perimeter, security fencing and screening, so mostly screening for right now. We're going to use the surveillance to see where perhaps we need to make, how do you say, adjustments to the fences. But we're not going to be doing a whole lot of fencing right now. And then elementary secure interiors, we need to look at those. And emergency alerting pilots are going on right now. We have three pilots. One with Titan, one with Stategix, and one with. Thank you, audio enhancement. Thank you so much. And then we have here, critical infrastructure, say the CNG, I'm sorry, the central kitchen renovation. We have equipment there that is 40 years old. It's well beyond, we are really flirting with disaster there if we don't look at renovating some of the refrigeration equipment there. And then CNG refueling infrastructure for the bus fleet, that needs to be replaced. It's getting hard to find parts for, so. And then some of our high school buildings and elementary portables are well beyond their useful life. And so we'd like to take a look at that. And then program requirements, we're looking at roofs and flooring. We're catching up. And so the board was very supportive during the budget study session. You gave us direction that we could catch up a little bit there and fund over the 4% to get that caught up. And we're really, really trying to get there, and there's a lot of work going on right now. Classroom and library furniture, how the classroom operates. You know, furniture can make a big difference there, and so we're looking at classroom and library furniture. And then, of course, restroom renovations, because that came out on top. And so there's, and then program enhancements, we're not, quite not there yet, but there's plenty of work here in phase one to get done, and we're moving as quickly as we can. And then here, you'll see there's a map of by survey, by the priority. So restrooms being number one, instructional space, theater, and so on and so forth. You can see the projects and how they fall in that. And we're hitting every one of them except for parking lot expansion and admin. And so this, I guess this kind of goes with, we don't run in the hallways. Parking lot expansion really is kind of dependent on some other things. If we decide to do some, how do you say, permanent, I'm sorry, portable to permanent? Or how is that, temporary to permanent replacement? That may change some of the parking situation. So we really need to kind of get a handle on that first before we go there. And so with that, then, happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Trustees, are you digesting the information? I see trustee Barto and then Ersoilu and then Anderson in that order.
I'm just really excited and grateful to see this. It's been a long labor of love for a lot of people. And I think I'm so thankful the community was so involved. And I love to see that where we ended up prioritizes students with all the things that we selected, you know, from safety to everything in between. So thank you very much. That's all.
Trustee Ersoilu?
Thank you. This was awesome and necessary. The parking one is odd, and I'm wondering if that's very site-specific, because that seems like a very site-specific. Like, did you notice from the data, like, are there certain schools? Because I can't imagine that that's everybody's priority, but.
It is very site-specific. We have some sites that we really do need to do something. And we just need to sort out if there's going to be some building issues that we can take care of. If not, then we can move forward, and we'd come to you with that plan later on.
Trustee Anderson?
Thank you. Yes, following up on the parking lot item, since I was just brought up. I was at Pomona the other day, and it's fascinating because some of our schools just weren't designed with ample parking, right? And so I was wondering, I think, you know, we have our liaison meeting with the cities, but particularly in Costa Mesa. I think one of the things, it took us, I think, five years of bringing it up, but now you can park in front of Wilson Elementary, and it's blocked off for support staff for people to go rather than it just being a free-for-all. And so I think if there's, if some of those conversations need to be had at the city level, I think it could be really important for a Pomona, a College Park, like certain schools that are extremely impacted now before we decide, before, you know, five years from now, if we need to do portable changes or, you know, changing a parking lot structure. But making some temporary changes that are maybe, you know, between 7:00 AM and 4:00 PM. It's a certain color, maybe navy blue or something. We don't have that in Costa Mesa, that it's blocked off for staff and parents. Because what I saw at Pomona was there were probably six different work trucks. Just people in the neighborhood were parking there, and so our support staff or people who are visiting or parents can't park there. While on the other side of the street, it was open. Like, it just doesn't, it doesn't make a lot of sense and the street sweeping. So all of those, I think, are connected points, and I know we're doing a much better job with connecting with this city staff. So I think that could be something shorter term. If we could work out an agreement that's, you know, 200 feet in front of some of these schools. I know one of the concerns I heard at Whittier was parking, and there's a lot of parking around Whittier. But if people don't know they're allowed to park or there's work trucks everywhere. So I think just having some of those conversations short-term would be, we don't want. It's really frustrating when you go to a parking lot and you're like, "I just want to visit the school." This happened to me three times this week, you know? And so I think just having some areas that are available and working with our city partners would be great. And kind of connected to that is just thinking through the drop-offs, which I know oftentimes it's the principal's job to figure that out. But now that we're adding in TK and a lot of our schools have preschool, I don't know, and our sites weren't designed for that. You know, there's a massive extra field at Pomona specifically. And right now there's accidents happening. There's, you know, there's a lot of stuff going on where the kindergarten kids are dropped off and the preschool kids are dropped off that I think for not a lot of money, we could address. But it just wasn't something that came up, you know, when these schools were built in 1965. So I think just paying attention to some of that, so we don't have any kind of injuries, makes me concerned. And then also, too, one of the things, I know we're going to spend some resources with the central kitchen, and I understand that that is important for some, you know, things immediately. But every single school that I go to, almost to a fault, the nutrition staff wants to cook. And particularly now, the students are saying, you know, "We don't want quantity. We would prefer to have quality and not have, you know, everything in bags." And I think we're seeing the transition away from that. But some of the schools have existing stoves and ovens that are ready to go, but the spaces are so constricted because they just keep getting new items to fit in a really small space. And there hasn't been a district-wide kind of reorganization or, you know, there's certain one wall that will have like weird shelves and no one can put anything there or a sink that was gone. I mean, there's just a lot of funky things. And so with some really small tweaks and not a lot of money, and maybe working with some of our community partners like IKEA, you know, for not a lot of money, we would be able to make these much more workable spaces. And I think, too, just asking some of our support staff, "What do you need?" When I was just chatting with one, they were like, "Oh, I just need a new knife." And I was like, "You shouldn't be asking for a new..." Like, if you just need a knife, there should be a process in place. And so it just kind of goes from really simple to, you know, changing the configuration of entire school sites at times. I think we sometimes forget some of those basic pieces. And then I think, I was just wondering about the CNG, the bus fueling. And I know at different points, we've talked about the expense for electric buses. But I was just wondering what if. I was just wondering what, if, if we're having to do a lot of infrastructure around the CNG, what is the price difference, rather than if we were to go with electric buses or start thinking that way? Those were some of the initial things that wanted some answers on at some point. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Weigand, and then trustee Murphy.
So on to the restrooms. Yes. Did that also include comments and updates to like locker rooms and those types of things that people had put? So that's where I can kind of see how that would become a top priority. And I have to say, I do get a lot of comments about the restrooms and locker rooms and images, and all those kinds of things that parents and kids get upset about, as well as, you know, when you go on Open House and have to use the restroom, you're like, wow, hasn't changed since I was here. So, so that's my comment, is that, yes, I can definitely understand how the restrooms get, get up there, and how, yes, thank you for clarifying, it also includes locker rooms and showers.
Yeah, that did include locker rooms.
Yeah, perfect, thanks.
Trustee Murphy?
Oh, well, yes, Jeff, obviously, thank you. This was great. I know your team worked really hard on this, so we appreciate it very much. I am wondering where you're going to get all those new toilets from. I mean, you should not let that out, you're going to get bids of the Yingang. But my question would then be, how are we, and I'm assuming you're doing this, so this might be moot, but you're going to prior, or give us a prioritization of the, you know, elementary, secondary restroom renovations? Like, you're then going to go dig, I'm assuming, into like which ones need to be prioritized first, right? But I'm assuming that's what's going to come next to us? An assessment then of the parking issues at each of the schools, and what needs to be dealt with first, kind of thing? Whether we have the funding available or not necessarily, but, so we can kind of look at who needs what first?
Yeah, so, so this sheet here is really our map. And so our facilities director, Otto de La Soul, and her team are going to be then coming to you, assuming that you, that this, you approve this recommendation. This will focus our work on these things here for Phase One.
Yeah, but then you get into, it just says roofs and flooring, so I'm assuming we're going to get...
This, yeah, this is all Phase One.
Yeah.
All of this.
But then we're going to get the list of...
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah, so, so our facilities team will come to you with specific recommendations on, on specific projects.
Okay. That's all. Thanks, Jeff. Because you can't park at Paularino either, I think I told you.
Yeah, it's hard.
Okay, I was going to make a couple of comments. For one, I have very much appreciated the engagement in those surveys. And I love the fact that we, you know, we had the forums, we had the thought exchange online as well to make it accessible for more parents and community members. And then I love the follow-through, so that at least now the parents that were engaged in the beginning are seeing the results and being captivated again into answering more questions and seeing the value of their opinion. And same with the community. And I love the jump in student involvement. T-Winkle gets the shout-out with 347, and most of those were student input. It's like, wow, because that's what we want to hear. So whatever T-Winkle did, thank you for that. And of course, we always love the data, so thank you for that. Secondly, Phase One, timing and affordability. So I'm assuming since it's Phase One, we're, we're okay with that? Can you give us a little more information on that?
Sure. So Phase One, what you're looking at here, everything is budgeted with the exception of elementary secure interiors.
Okay.
And high school building and elementary portables. Everything else is in the budget.
Okay. All right.
But those two things are pretty large.
Because I think you said 140 million, that was the number you threw out, I think it was.
Yeah, the current...
For the currently planned projects.
Right, 131.6 million.
Including the theater?
Yeah.
Okay, great work. It was really, we're just, it's interesting that, it's fascinating to see the beginning and then the, the process of moving through phases and stages, and it's an important, I mean, that was, it's one of our board priorities. So we appreciate the fact that staff is putting a lot of emphasis on it, and we're seeing data and progression. So thank you.
Yes, please, kudos to DLR group. I feel like they just really did an excellent job on this, and the engagement as well. They were really approachable.
I appreciate that, and also think our facilities group, they've worked very hard on this project, and so thank you for all the direction and guidance.
Jeff, just real quick, one thing, so I'm assuming this, these little...
Trustee, Murphy.
Oh, sorry. One of these, the pictures of the little circles there?
Uh huh.
That's your, like, Ballard?
Yes.
Right?
Yes, those are ballards.
Not the ugly ones I was worried about.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
We'll come up with attractive ones.
Thanks.
Okay, so, at this point, do I have a motion to approve the master plan recommendations, the 2024 master plan recommendations?
So moved, second.
Okay, trustee Ersoilu moved it, and trustee Anderson, was it?
Yes.
Seconded, roll call vote, please.
Student board member Brianna Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Weigand?
Yes.
Trustee Ersoilu?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you, and the vote passes unanimously. So let's move, let's move on to resolution adoption calendar, 20A, adopt resolution 200524, recognizing May 19th to 25th, 2024, as Classified School Employee Week. Assistant Superintendent Olson?
Yes, thank you. Well, as you heard earlier this evening, our Classified Appreciation Week is right around the corner, May 19th through the 25th, and we want to honor our classified employees. We saw some fine examples presented tonight as our Classified Employees of the Year. And I think it, it is essential to recognize the work that they do and the support that our classified folks add to our educational organization, both in process and in environment. You can just take a look at some of the work that Mr. Trader was sharing, and we know who some of the folks are behind the scenes on that. Oftentimes, there are unsung heroes, the people that are counted upon every day, they update our facilities, they ensure our employees get paid on time, they're taking care of their, their benefits, and we could go on and on. And also, I think it's important that we recognize the impact that they have on students, not just the indirect that I just spoke of, but also the direct connections that they make. We know that it takes really only one adult to make a significant change, a significant difference in a child's life, and it could be the custodian who says, how are you as you're having lunch? It could be our bus drivers who welcome them or drop them off in the afternoon. It could be the office support staff that welcomes someone in the office and on a bad day. Our IAs that are there, and that kids can count on them every day. And so this is a really special time for us, and we want to support and show our appreciation for our classified staff. It certainly goes beyond one week a year, but we do have May 19th through the 25th as our official Classified Appreciation Week.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Great, trustee Weigand moved it, and trustee Anderson seconded, roll call, please.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Weigand?
Yes.
Trustee Ersoilu?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Adopt resolution 210524, order of biannual trustee election and specifications of the election order. Dr. Smith?
Yes, Newport Mesa Unified is one of the districts that has biannual elections, which means every two years on even-numbered years, we call for an election of some of our trustee zones. This year, we have three zones. You'll all recall, I was an English teacher, so I don't do math very well. The item says four, but the three here listed, one, three, and six, and they're accurate. And then this resolution authorizes county superintendent to call the election for next November.
All right, then, do we have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
All right, so trustee Ersoilu with a second from trustee Pearson, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Weigand?
Yes.
Trustee Ersoilu?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes, and may I make a comment?
Yes, trustee Anderson.
I know when we recently, well, a little bit after the census, we did redistricting, and we had a newer group that did our demography. I know one of the things that was asked by me, and I think by other people, was to have maps that are trustee-only zones, or something that is sort of like a lot of the city councils have, where you can, you can zoom in, kind of more like Google Maps, and see the streets. And our current map that's on the website is better than the old one, but it's still really hard to see what the boundaries are. I think I've had 10 people ask me in the past four weeks. So I know that was an ask, I don't know what was exactly in the contract or what those conversations were, but I think that would be really helpful to have going into this time, but also going forward.
Yeah, so I was going to share that during my superintendent comments. You just shortened them by a minute and a half, so you're all welcome, you can thank trustee Anderson. Jeff's been working on this, and I'll let him share the good news.
Great, thank you.
So we, I saw how it'll be presented online, so you'll be able to go to the website and drill in. And then we'll also have static maps that will be available that can be printed off or that kind of thing too, from the website. And that should be up here early next week.
Wonderful, thank you. While we're at it, could we take out Mona Vista, the, and move it to the PDF that's on the website? It shows Mona Vista back base still in the same, the icon.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make that correction, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so, roll call vote. Did we, we voted, okay, there's a lot. 21C, adopt resolution 230524, designating the observance of Washington Day on February 17th, 2025, and Lincoln Day on February 18th, 2025. Olson?
Thank you. So this is related to our president's recess that we had in February. In order for us to have the full week off, we move and recognize President's Day and Lincoln's Birthday on the dates given, February 17th and February 18th. This does not change our, it does not change our, that week, it just allows the board to acknowledge that, which is permissible through ed code.
Thank you. All right, do we have a motion?
So moved, second.
Okay, moved by trustee Weigand, seconded by trustee Ersoilu, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Weigand?
Yes.
Trustee Ersoilu?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. We move on to informal reports, superintendent Smith?
I wanted to begin by just recognizing how lucky we are to have the amazing, classified, certificated administrative leaders that we have in this district. We hear the, the folks being recognized tonight. It's inspirational, though, the work that they do in each regard. Look, our students deserve the best, and it's these amazing employees that guarantee every day they get what they need and deserve, so that they can realize their dreams. And so to, to all of them, even the national board, what an accomplishment. Fewer than 3% of the teachers in America have that. We had two tonight, so kudos, kudos to all of you. We, we recognized principals recently, and I just, I don't want to forget them in this. They're certainly not forgettable. They tend not to get complimented as much because they're dealing with other stuff. But I was at an event, the Exchange Club, giving away awards to students who overcome great challenges. And this one, one young man from our district who's, who suffered significant setbacks and faced many obstacles, who is now graduating and moving on, said, I feel bad for all the students at my school, because the principal's retiring, and they won't get a chance to work with him. And he's the first person in my education that I felt like truly cared about me. And that person wasn't there to hear it. Interestingly enough, his daughter was, and then sent it out to the entire family. But again, our administrative team, our classified team, our certificated team across the board, we have the best in this district, and I'm so honored to work with them. Speaking of this collaboration with great teammates, we had the learning, our, the Labor Management Initiative work recently, and we've had some great meetings with them. But I'll tell you, this last one was transformational, I believe. And we came up with some, some targets, moving on, some goals we really want to focus on. One of them, to me, just speaks volumes for why this is the best district in California, and I believe will be one of the best districts in the country no time soon. They said, we have to make every decision in this district based on the best interest of students, right? You've got classified, certificated, management, with, with a variety of jobs. And they all listed up, every single decision we make, regardless of our title, has to be based on the best interest of students. Powerful. Then another one was, we are Newport Mesa Unified. So instead of us and them and silos, we are the district. There's no, oh, the district decided, no, no, we are the district. Let's treat it like we're all a part of this, all right? Let's share in this, the decision-making, these successes that we're seeing. And this was echoed by, and I mentioned to trustee Anderson, I was going to mention this, when we gave away employee gifts, and when she was then president, if you look at the logo, it says Newport Mesa, which is great, amazing cities. Unified was about five times the size of, of the, the city names, because that's what we are. We're unified, we are Newport Mesa Unified, and I love that message. Speaking of award ceremonies, the Newport Mesa Schools Foundation, the teacher grants, thank you again, everybody, listening to the teachers, thank folks and get to hear some of the great things they're investing in. But my wife and I gave a memorial grant on behalf of my grandparents, and the person who won the grant thanked me so mu, and I was looking at her, she meant it. She wasn't just, oh, thanks, she really, really, really couldn't thank me enough. So I got home and messaged all of my family and talked about the impact my grandparents continue to have. And then we got to go to this California School Recognition Dinner. Interesting event, interesting event.
Message.
Yeah, no, no comment, but, 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 but what can't be lost is, we had two schools, right? When the distinguished school, they, they earned it, Estancia and a Crown Royal Marbelle. And then we had, early college, get a national blue ribbon, and it's a lighthouse, the only secondary lighthouse in the state of California. So regardless of the chicken that night, and the dessert, it was an amazing evening because we lifted up three amazing schools in this district, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Smith, I do concur about the chicken. All right, we will move on to, to board member reports with trustee Weigand?
Thank you.
And then down the line?
So I too attended the Newport Mesa Schools Foundation Teacher Grant Program, and the board, we gave a, a grant to a teacher, and it's always wonderful to see how they're going to put that money to use, but we're more than happy to provide funds for our, for our teachers to expand the knowledge for their students in class. So it's, it's a wonderful, a wonderful event put on by some caring people at the Newport Mesa Schools Foundation. They do a great job every year. It's a lot of work, and just thank you for everything that they do. And then I attended the Newport Beach Police Appreciation Luncheon, and that was great to, you know, appreciate and give out awards to the police officers that have gone above and beyond their call of duty. One thing that they didn't mention, though, is about our school resource officers, and hopefully we can try to change that and provide, you know, maybe an award for the, what they do for us, and the, the safety and security, and just kind of friendship on campus that they provide for our students. But it was, it was a wonderful luncheon, and, you know, we're so lucky to have such a great police force in our community. And then this is musical season for elementary schools, so got a couple coming up, or just a couple hours of watching students and sing, and that's going to be great. My daughter's in it, and so I'm volunteering for the week. And I really am very excited that we have new fans and everything going into our elementary NPRs, so that'll be great for this next, this next year. And that's it. And that's it.
And I defer to the next person.
Thank you. I also attended the Newport Mesa Scholarship Foundation Dinner and the Police Association Lunch now, it's no longer breakfast, which I, which is great for people who have to drop off their kids at school, so I appreciate that. And really amazing and I just second the appreciation for our SROs and all they do for our students. I also was part of the Coastline ROP Awards and they gave the Student of the Year Awards, which were really fun to watch because you had, the, the main winner was a character. He, if he doesn't want to be a dentist, he could be a stand-up comedian and that would be just as great. Like he doesn't need laughing gas, he would just, he's just so funny. But he kind of highlighted just the importance of our career technical education programs and how people a lot of times take our career technical education classes to find out what they don't want to do. His mother was a dentist, so he took the class to please her, fully convinced, she was fully convinced that he wouldn't like it, but she's like, oh, you don't check the box. And he ended up loving it, so he's going to follow in her footsteps. And then another of our students who completed a robotics pathway, went through that, learned some really wonderful things and they plan to take those skills to the medical field because they, robotics and engineering was really great, but it wasn't exactly what they were looking for and so they want to take that to medical. So just a lot, just really great opportunities we offer to our kids. So many, I want to thank all the principals who made it there to support our Newport Mesa students. We had a really great showing and quite a few awards, just like a huge participation. So it's always fun to watch people who, you know, a lot of, we see a lot of same faces and a lot of them are getting sports awards and other recognitions as well, but it's nice to see them in a different vein. And a lot of these programs are countywide, so, you know, they get that extra benefit of interacting with students from different backgrounds across the county. So that was it.
I was just trying to find the name of it. I guess probably one of the most, not necessarily fun, but enlightening events or classes that I was able to attend last couple of weeks was when we had a veteran come and speak to our, one of the history classes at Costa Mesa High School. And it was, it was great to walk into a classroom and see every student just in full attention and listening and being, you know, told about all of the opportunities that you can, you know, get and achieve through joining, you know, a branch of the military. And certainly, I appreciated that the, he was a Vietnam vet, he was amazing. He was very inspirational. He guaranteed he did not make the Vietnam War sound fun, so that was good. But the, but just really explaining how you can build teamwork and all the opportunities that can come out of possibly going on that path as well as four years of college possibly paid for. So I did see some heads perk up at that idea. So that was great and glad that we do that. Also went to the Daughters of the American Revolution event where we were able to hand out, or the, the group was able to hand out plenty of awards to Costa Mesa students, so that was fun. Dr. Potness and I were there for that, that was great. And then I guess what was also really fun, another classroom I got to be in was at Sonora on Monday. Trustee Anderson joined me. Our federal representative, Congresswoman Porter, offered to share the program Every Kid Outdoors. It's a federal program that allows fourth graders, so all the parents of fourth graders out there, any fourth graders listening, you can go onto the website, everykidoutdoors.gov. You scroll down to the bottom, if you're a fourth grader, you click on it and you can download and apply for a free parks pass that is good for a year. So you can go to all of the national parks. Congresswoman Porter was pretty, pretty funny about this, as many as you can squeeze in in a, in a year.
And in a car.
And in a car. Bring all of your family members, your extended family members, they will get in free with you. Yeah, no, it was, it was great. And another, it's a great program. There's quite a few departments of the government who support and fund the program so that families have access to the national parks, which was really great. And the students had so many questions. It was another great room with students in rapt attention. They saw, she was supposed to speak for maybe like 10, 15 minutes and she saw, they kept asking her questions, so she was there for like 30 minutes and where could they go and what's her most fun park and what was the scariest thing that she saw and what was the best animal she saw? And I don't know, it just was very inspiring to see our kids thinking through and understanding, you know, like what all of the possibilities are out there for them, so that was great.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes, well, I got to go to the Police Appreciation Luncheon and the Newport Mesa School Foundation Award Ceremony and they were both wonderful. Thank you to the, both those organizations. I think one of my favorite things I did this month was attend the Superintendent's Advisory Council, which is run by Dr. Smith. And I was here in this, in this room and he invites high school, different high school students from all of our high schools to come and talk. And it was so great to see him interact with the kids. It was so nice for him to actually listen to the children and get their ideas and see what, what they want. At the end of the meeting, he asked what their hopes for the district were. And every student had, really had only positive things to say about our district. We were all in tears, I mean, by the time they left. They were so thankful for his time, how he listened to them and how they saw things that they had said to him actually happened in our classrooms and in our schools. So that had to be one of my favorite, one of my favorite moments this month. Another meeting I got to attend, which I thought was very helpful and wonderful, was one that Dr. Hernandez ran and that was a meeting for our newly identified gifted students. And she took the time to talk to these parents and it was very well-attended in the Corona Del Mar zone. And I appreciate the fact that she was there talking to these parents and telling them, telling them what to expect with our gifted program. And she mentioned that we cluster the kids, she mentioned that every teacher in our zone teaches to that high level. And I saw that high-level teaching in so many things that I saw over these last six weeks. And that was, I saw Newport Coast Elementary Class Act Family Night where they brought in a Pacific, the Pacific Symphony. I don't think that that is a family night that I would have actually thought about going to, but again, that, that high level and it was very well-attended and a wonderful night for those Newport Coast parents. I got to see a coding robotic lesson, again, for those high achievers and was super impressed with, I couldn't have done that either. Lincoln had a GOB, which was fantastic. I heard it's a 79-page study guide that these students were able to take at the beginning of the school year and show what they knew at the end. It was very, very impressive. And Guys and Dolls at CDM Middle School, which those students are gifted on the, in the theater, which was fantastic.
Awesome, thank you. Another thank you, Mr. Trader, for the facilities presentation and for Lance and the entire team. I know, I think trustee Barto, Barto said it's a long time coming and it was amazing to just see so many plans and so many things that we hear almost every time we're in the community from staff and just to make some of those really needed improvements, I think will be amazing. I'm really looking forward to them, particularly the MPRs and the microphones. And I was wondering if we can make sure to send out information to the principals. I know one principal I spoke to this week didn't know that we were going to be doing some renovations and adding mics and so just, I think, communicating all of that out well. She was talking about possibly buying them and I was like, no, you don't need to. And then I was able to attend the Costa Mesa Active Transportation Committee with Shelley is always there, thankfully. I'm not always able to make it. And it was just a really great time of hearing community input. A lot of people, I think, in both of our cities have been seeing a lot of pros and cons to students being safe or unsafe on bikes. And one of the conversation, on e-bikes or any bikes, but conversations in Costa Mesa was allowing children to ride their e-bikes on sidewalks if they felt safe or not safe. And so that was something that was discussed and was decided in Costa Mesa that it was going to be allowed because a lot of times students are riding without the electric part of their bike and there's a lot of places in Costa Mesa that don't have sidewalks or there's no bike lane at all, like Placentia and Victoria places, it's really treacherous. So that it wouldn't be, at one point, they were talking about fining students if they weren't on the sidewalk, which a lot of us in the community said, please don't do that. If you need to, maybe give some friends community service hours, but our students don't have a lot of money to be paying for bike fines like that. So that was just a great open conversation and I was glad to hear that. And I was really excited to be able to attend the California Distinguished Awards Dinner for Estancia. While the team-building time was the best part, it was just wonderful to see Estancia receive that after so many years, I think, under Principal Holt and Mrs. Chamberlain and some of the other staff and teachers there. There's just been massive improvements and engagement with the entire Estancia zone and so I'm excited to see that going forward. I'm also thankful for Ms. Shields and all of the work that you're doing around swim access and continuing to have those conversations. I'm really excited for where that can go and hopefully we can get more of our students swim ready and safe. And then lastly, it was really great to see at the PTA Lunch, similarly to what Ms. Olson was sharing about having one positive adult can, can make a big difference to some of our students. And I got to sit next to our community school facilitator for College Park, Jamie Paley, who every single day welcomes every single child by name at College Park. So it was great to see her get that recognition for something that impacts every single student. So that is all, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just add one more thing?
Yes, yes. I saw your light.
Yeah, sorry about that.
No, not at all.
I just would be very remiss if I didn't congratulate the Costa Mesa Swim Team.
Oh, yeah.
The boys, they made history with their back-to-back championships that they won last Friday, so congratulations to the Costa Mesa Boys Swim Team. You were in the paper, making, so I'm hoping everyone saw that and is congratulating those boys. Jose, for having such a great team and all of his hard work.
I'm sure we'll be recognizing them soon
Yep.
in our boardroom. Thank you. All right, so I wanted to, to mention financial literacy. Every, usually every May meeting, we approve a course of studies and I'm very excited to hear that we're going to begin offering financial literacy at the middle school levels, starting with Enson, and hopefully scaling it to the other schools. It is something that I have heard for the last three and a half years, I've been a, a board member, about the fact that, that parents' community wants our kids to have financial literacy. So thank you for doing that, very exciting. I was very happy to see that. So we just approved that tonight as one of the, the new courses. Thank you. Lots of events going on everywhere. I was fortunate to go to the PTA Honorary Service Award Luncheon, the City of Costa Mesa State of the City, whatever it's called luncheon. We went, we went to the Bus Driver Appreciation Luncheon, was, was wonderful. Wow. Elsie, your, your speech was amazing. Also attended the Retired NMFT Luncheon, which was lovely and Joanne, thank you for always organizing. I attended the ELAC meeting at East Bluff Elementary and I wanted to congratulate Principal De La Real and also Chrissy Flores for being there and for informing the ELAC parents about the opportunities for their children, specifically summer school. So that was wonderful and very appreciated. It was standing room only, there were about 30 parents there, which was amazing. That's amazing engagement. Went to, one of the highlights of my week was attending Back Bay High School for a intramural soccer team match, soccer match against a, another alternative school in, from Anaheim. And I was just blown away, first of all, at the, the depth of our team. There were about 18 kids on the team. Blown away by the sportsmanship, how engaged they were. They even had uniforms, the school spirit, teachers brought their classes out. I mean, I was just, this is, this was not anything that I had seen before in alternative education, so I hope we can grow that. And I know that was their second game out of four. And just the affective part of being on a team and the behavior of the kids, they're all smiling. And this is kids who have been very challenged and they're having an amazing time and basically it made them want to come to school. How cool is that? So thank you to Dr. Byermeister and the staff at Back Bay for making sure that these programs exist for our kids. And they had coaches that were part of the staff and, you know, just wonderful feeling. It was great, thank you. Went to CDM's few events, including Guys and Dolls, middle school theater, amazing pathway to high school theater. Our, you know, that, one of the objectives for us is to always have a bridging program and this is an excellent example of what our middle schools can do in order to bridge to the next level for our kids' passions. And attended the Daughter of the American Revolution as well, with trustee Murphy was there that she had mentioned previously. I love the fact that they, they award our elementary schools, they recognize our elementary schools because oftentimes we focus on the high schools, you know, secondary, but this was very focused also on the kids' civic engagement and history engagement at the elementary school levels. And then the teachers were there, some of the principals were there from, from our, our elementary schools. So that was really wonderful to see the support that we're getting from our nonprofit partners. A lot of money was also paid out for our kids, so. Then I'm looking forward to ACE Day. I am looking forward to going to the State Delegate Assembly this coming weekend with trustee Barto and I are going to representing Region 15 and also NMUSD. And summer school, wow, 2,200 students signed up for summer school and the waitlist is, I'm sure, is becoming, is very robust. So again, Newport Mesa offering kids an all-day summer school with different levels of teaching and fun. So wow, thank you for staff for doing all of that. And lastly, I don't believe we'll be seeing our students so, good luck with finals, the last thing of APs, graduation, I think, I believe will be right about the same time we have our last, one of our June meetings. So a happy and safe graduation to all of our seniors of Class of 2024. That's it. We adjourn the meeting at 8:28. Thank you.
[applause] [end of transcript]